Good evening, I'm gonna call a meeting, a joint meeting of the Fiscal Management Subcommittee and the Cumberland School Committee to order at 5:31. And then I'm gonna do, go through the logistical stuff and then I'll turn it over to Mrs. Freeman to chair the full meeting. First order of business for the Fiscal Subcommittee will be an approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second. By Ms. Vogel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the agenda's approved three to zero. I will now turn it over to Chair Persing Freeman to convene the full meeting of the Cumberland School Committee.
So I suppose I would like to call it over to the joint meeting of the Fiscal Management Subcommittee and the Cumberland School Committee at 5:32 PM. For assignment on the agenda is approval of agenda, any motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Rogalski.
Second.
Second by Ms. Vogel, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes six to zero for the record, Mrs. Feather is absent. So the next item on the agenda is the Budget Workshop Overview of School Department Financial Operations.
Good evening all, so to start things off, we're gonna do our first night tonight of the workshop and go over some big budget ideas. Before we do that, just a couple of thoughts. As you look around Rhode Island in the news cycle, you'll probably see a lot of towns looking at closing schools, laying off many, many, many faculty and staff. In Cumberland, as you'll learn in the next several nights, our challenge is, you know, we're not looking at layoffs, we're looking actually at increased enrollment. It may be the tough problem of which adds do we do over other adds. The other thing for you to consider and to wrestle with is, you know, in working on our budget, we use what's called fund balance, as you know, or like our savings if you will. How much of that do you deploy this year, looking at budget out years? What's our risk tolerance? The other two variables I would just tell you about is, as you'll hear from Tim and others, state aid is not fully in, the governor didn't follow the formula and we're short $500,000. And talking to people I talked to at the State House, I am not optimistic we'll get that full amount. We may get some of the 500, right now the 500's in there, as if we're gonna get the full formula. So if it's one million of fund balance, it's really a million five, or maybe, you know, million three. But that's another kind of factor for you. So the sweet spot is like, what's our risk tolerance for using fund balance? What new jobs do you want to consider putting in to address enrollment? And the last piece I had was, oh, last week I told you, we had, first we looked at 40 few jobs from our principals, we whittled it down to under 20. I told you tonight, you'll hear later on from Tony, we're gonna knock that down, recommend it to you to, I believe, 11 or so. Not that the seven jobs you got last week were without merit, they have great merit, it's just once again, is it sustainable? And so later on, Tony will tell you about that. With that, I'll turn things over to Tim and we'll talk about budget, big ideas. Tim?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton, good evening everyone. We'll jump right in. All right, so what we're gonna go over tonight is, we'll start off with where does the money go? And then Assistant Superintendent Demano will jump in and kind of reiterate some of the points Dr. Thornton brought up about personnel. And then we'll circle back to myself, we'll talk about the revenue of the district, fund balance, and then we'll finish off comparing to other districts. And that number you see up there, the 79 million, that's currently what our full budget ask would be, right, just shy of 80 million dollars. All right, so I like to put this together at a real high level. Everyone always wants to know, where does the money go in a district? So if you take the full ask that we have, our 80 million dollars, and we subtract out personnel-related costs, all right, you see that 46 million dollars and the 16 million dollars? Well, so that's your salaries and benefits. So right away, 80 million dollars of the, 80% of the budget is already been used up. So that leaves us 16 million dollars. So now we jump down to the next level. Well, we gotta transport all the kids, so there's your four and a half million dollars. And then added district tuition adds up for another 4.6. Then we take out utilities, because we gotta pay the electric bills. That leaves us with 5 million dollars to run the rest of the district. So now, I've only gone over, so far we've put the teachers in their rooms, we've got the kids there, we've added district and we've turned the lights on. So we have the, what's the rest of the district? So student supplies and student services makes up the, makes up another 2 million dollars, I'm sorry, makes up another 4% of the budget, leaving us 2.3 million dollars for the rest of the district. And out of that, we have our admin supplies, operational supplies, and our capital improvements. So when you look at the district, really, there's only 3% of it is associated with operational supplies and services, so it's really lean. A lot of the money goes, is, as it should be, is the teaching area, we're in a service business. But I think a lot of people don't realize the amount of money that disappears right here, in transportation and added district. You know, it's 12% of the budget, right in those two lines, right away. I just like doing that, so you can kind of get a framework of what we're actually looking at overall. And then if you look at that as a pie graph I put together, you know, you can see the large majority is made up with employee benefits and then added district tuitions, transportation takes up another chunk, leaving just this little chunk to be the paperclips, the pencils, the pens, all the other items that need to be bought. The operational supplies all live in here, so very small piece of the pie. So with that, Mr. Demano, I think you want?
Are you going to show us the detail on the added district tuition?
That is in your packets, it's, I'd have to look what number it is, but as you, if you look at the detail, well, I have a slide that kind of goes over how I did the budget and what to look at, but there is a breakout of all the added district tuitions, line by line of the different schools that make up that list.
Can we circle back to that?
We can circle back to that, yeah.
I'll make a list on here.
Okay, yeah, I think I'll share with you too, Tim, some of these, a couple of these artifacts that we've received in the past that are just kind of like ongoing artifacts of, like this is a, this one page here is the Charter Schools Impact in Cumberland.
Yep.
And it just has like, kind of, gives us the history of some of it, and then just the, hey, where are we now? We, I mean, that question is always gonna come up, like what's our BVP? Because it's mostly BVP.
Right, yeah.
Impact. And what's the trend on that?
So the, I can tell you that right now, so we budgeted 3 million, it's like 3.1 million dollars for BVP, that's down from 3.5 in the past, so that was the budget number this year. That's where we're trending for this year. I'm hoping to see that number accelerate even more, but it's such a shot in the dark number, but that's where we are. So it's approximately like $400,000 less in this year's budget as opposed to previous years.
Ready to go?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone. So I just want to say really quickly, the transition, working with the budget with Tim has been really, really smooth. He's been extremely transparent and he's done a really good job of educating the individuals in my office on how to, how we needed to adapt to the way that he approaches the budget. So he's done a really, really good job with that and it warrants thanking him for helping us out with that, so thank you. So you heard the superintendent mention that when the principals did their budgets, they justified over, over 40 positions among the nine buildings that we had. So Alicia, myself, Tim, the superintendent, Mike, when they proposed all of that stuff to us, again, 40-plus FTEs, and we needed to do our jobs to obviously cross-correlate that with where we were with the budget and make some very important decisions. But none of the 40, sounds like an outlandish number, but actually, all of them were in their own way justifiable, right? We can go to the next slide, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna read this slide from left to right. And what I just tried to capture here is, is trying to segment preschool and elementary, what are the positions that right now are being proposed in the superintendent's budget? What's being proposed at the middle schools? And also the high school and miscellaneous positions that sort of don't fall into any clean category. So right now, at Ashton, there is a proposed plus .5 increase psychologist, and I'll explain how that impacts the larger picture. There is a plus one add at the elementary level, second grade, and I believe that that's enrollment-based. So that position is sort of a forced type of add. At Garvin, Alicia couldn't be here tonight, but she's gonna try and make one of the budget meetings next week, so she'll talk about the adds at Garvin, but basically they're adding or proposing to add one specialized classroom position in their ICANN program and one para to go along with that in that school. BF Norton also is asking for an additional resource, special educator, in addition to an additional MLL position. And if you have further questions about that, we can, we can talk about that in detail. At Cumberland Hill, an additional .5 school psychologist. And because of the transition with the preschool, these are three must-adds that you can't avoid either, which are one nurse, one secretary, and one custodian in order to function, in order to run the preschool. At the, any, any questions on that part before I move to the middle? No, okay. At the middle school level? Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize, and I don't know if we should hold some of these questions until later in a big group or not, but, okay. I'm just wondering, so the one additional nurse for the preschool, is that only for this year, because they are separated from like community, I guess, or when community's coming up here?
No, it's going forward every year.
And that's because it's going to be coming here after that?
Yes.
And then we'll need one in this building, so there's no way to share in any way?
Really can't share the high school nurse for the preschool, I think. I think you need, they have some major needs, I think you need a nurse for them.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm looking at the chart I asked, I had asked for before. So, Dr. Thornton, perhaps, you know, what was the total ask of all the administrators? Obviously, we whittled that number, the original number when it comes to?
It was 43.
Forty-three total, but out of that, how many were, so I'm just trying to get clarification on this chart we all have. How many, how many psych, social workers was the total ask out of that 43?
I'd have to look, I don't have that in front of me.
Because I'm just trying to, 9.1, .1.4, 2.4, 3.4, 4. So on this chart right here, maybe Mr. Demano can answer that?
Yep.
On the first line, you have, it says school psych proposal, and the first line underneath that, near the bottom of the spreadsheet, you have, it says now, that's what they currently have, correct? So BF Norton would have .6.
Exactly, so I'll explain, do you want me to explain that?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure. So I think I can answer the question. So right now, BF Norton has .6 school psychologist assigned to that building. The other portion of that actually is a .4, so there's a clerical error. Right now, the preschool has .4, okay, of that whole. So what Alicia is proposing is, she's saying that I can take .4 at the preschool and shift that over to BF Norton and make them whole, as a, as a wash.
I see.
Okay? At Ashton, they currently had, if you look up top, they currently had .5 in the proposal, you see an add for .5, so they would go up to one full school psychologist. At Cumberland Hill, same thing, if you look above number of school psychs right now, it's at .5. If you add, if you look down, they would have a 1.0 and a .5 add, which was included in that, on that list that you see there. .5, .5 on the top.
So the second line is what you're, what you're proposing to add?
Yeah, exactly, the second line.
This one down here? It's a little hard to find this.
You know what, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, she may have, she had editing rights, so she may have misunderstood what I was asking for. But the top line is supposed to be what, the top line should have been what existed now, instead I think it looks like the inverse. So if you look at the very, 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 very top, where it says number of psychologists up here.
Yep.
Up here. That's what exists right now. Yeah, that's the current, okay? And so what she's trying to do, if you look at BF Norton, she wants to make BF Norton whole at a 1.0, and she's gonna borrow some of those services from the preschool, and she thinks that she can make a do there with, and she would share that plan with you budgetarily on how she would do that. At Ashton, she's looking to go from .5 to a whole. At Cumberland Hill, she's looking to go from .5 to a whole. At Community, they already have a whole. At Garvin, they have a .6, they would remain at .6, but she, they apply for interns each year. And so she feels like, based on the specialized program that they have there, that that intern would be able to supplement some of the services rather than bringing them up to a whole. By the way, I'll clean this up and send it to you digitally.
Yeah, so the reason I'm asking is, I'm just trying to figure out, so, you know, what I would like to see, and I'm only one person?
Yep.
Is that every school be made whole, especially, you know, some of the schools that may have some sort of socioeconomic issues to deal with, some DCF. You obviously don't on the spreadsheet have a number on who has more DCF involvement or something like that. But, you know, so I'm trying to figure, I was, the reason I was asking to see how many they were asked for, because all I see on the board up there, out of the 11 positions we're filling is a .5, but I want to see what that looks like in real numbers, what that's gonna mean in actuality next year in the schools.
That's fine, yeah, Alicia and I can do that for you. Just so you know, the only other asks that were on the table, referencing your original question, BF Norton and Garvin were asking for more guidance, to make their guidance whole in lieu of school psych. The Director of Special Services feels as though, you know, when, when numbers are tight, she has to make a judgment call. She feels as though the sort of bang for the buck in terms of what school psychologists can provide in terms of data and reporting and doing evaluations, that their, their breadth of services that they provide is a larger bang for the buck. And so she prefers the psych ads to make most of the schools whole in that regard. Does that make sense? Okay. As far as social workers, I can check to see of the original, that's an easy thing, I can go through it and get you that information on what the original asks were, that's not a big deal. I'll provide that for you for the next meeting. Any other questions? Yeah. So are we looking at essentially one additional hire for psych? Correct. And when you do that, the majority of your schools will have one full psychologist with the exception of Garvin, which they feel like the intern would supplement the .4 lapse there. And then Alicia feels very strongly about how she would handle the preschool, and I would talk to her about that when she comes next week.
Chair, if I did, I don't know if I'm, I can ask my own questions, because this is a joint meeting or not, I'm a little confused, but I'll just follow protocol. I do have a question about the Director of Culture and Student Services, perhaps, just for budgetary reasons. Obviously, we have the job description in front of us, we've talked about it before, but what would the salary range be for that? Perhaps perhaps somebody can answer that, just so we can talk real dollars.
We're gonna cover that in a second, with a range I believe was 100 to 110.
Okay, thank you.
If, if it was put back, it's not in G6 yet, that was brought to G6 for discussion only, the policy, but that'll have to go back to the policy, but that was the range, like an assistant principals type range.
Um, I have, is it, does this slide represent all of the asks?
No, 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 it only represents the whittled down list of what you would see represented in the budget that the superintendent and Tim are going to be presenting to you.
Okay, that's what I meant. So this, there is, so this represents the total, what's in the budget now?
I guess I would just say, let them finish this slide and one more slide before we ask questions, because there are two pieces to this. There are the proposed adds, and as you hear in a minute, when ESSER ended, there are also five other jobs that we kept. For example, we had a grade seven teacher at North that was in ESSER, that teacher's still needed, grade seven student facing, they're not in the operating budget. So we had to resurrect five jobs like that, plus we're proposing to you these new ideas. So really, it's 16 you're talking about. But if you could let them go through this slide and one more, that might make more sense to you.
So in the, in the middle school, you'll see McCourt says zero teaming, FTE need four. So in order for, for McCourt to go back to what we call a teaming model, North Cumberland has a teaming model, which just simply means that every grade level, they have a pod of four teachers, science, math, English, social studies, that handle the grade level instruction. When you don't have teaming, it creates two problems. You have teachers teaching across grade levels and across content areas, bad for instruction, bad for proficiency, it's just not an efficient model. They had teaming, but when we faced past financial constraints, the superintendent was forced, class size-wise I believe was the issue, was forced to remove teaming from McCourt. But if, if the goal is for NCMS and McCourt to have a one-to-one synergistic schedule that runs in parity together, they would need teaming. So that's why it's up there. But right now, it says zero teaming, because it didn't make the superintendent's cut.
Well, actually, if I could just add, that was in your budget last week, and as Tim and I keep looking at each day and evolving our, our numbers, to me, it was not something I could say we can sustain. So while I think we should have it, and I want to have it, sadly, right now, I'm not thinking we can sustain it. Right now, it's up there in your budget now, I'd recommend to you take it off the board.
Thank you. Dr. Thornton, that was talked about last week as it related to the redistricting, and you had told us that at that time, those four positions were needed in order for us to even consider redistricting with the middle schools, which we know is drastically needed. So are you saying that we're going to have to continue to defer the balance? Because we need to get the educational levels at the middle schools to be equal.
If you want to do a boundary shift, you would need teaming at McCourt to absorb any students. Right now, they're tight, you couldn't fit anymore. So teaming has two, two goals, first, the boundary conversation, second, educational. It's good. Good stuff, good for kids, good for teaching and learning. It's just, as you'll see, we can't do everything. Like I said, most towns are closing buildings, we're fighting over in our heads mentally, what do we add? To me, this is a really legit add. It's just, I'm faced between recommending that or MLL, where kids are coming and we need someone to be in front of these kids. So that's kind of the tussle we have as far as the ads. But it's worthy, definitely.
So how are we expected to get the synergies between the two middle schools and bring the level of achievement up at McCourt? Because it seems that year in and year out, with more Title I students, we are cutting away from McCourt, and we're not balancing that school, and they're not becoming proficient to the levels that we're expecting in the town, is one of our needs, schools.
I guess what I would say is, hold to the end as you think about this, even the drive home of next week, but the idea would be, if you want to add something else back in, like those four jobs, let's say. Let's say right now, fund balance is at a million right now in the budget, that's a little meter in my hand. State aid is half a million dollars, that may not come in, maybe 200,000 comes in, we're at 1.3 to the bad. The BVP money for electricity is a one-timer, that's 586, 486K, that's really 1.8 of one-time money we're using. So when I got to that with Tim last week, I was like, okay, I gotta cut seven jobs out to get back to 1.1. Just have a chance, because then, think about, over the summer, we'll have K adds probably because of enrollment, we may get other budget pull pushes, that kind of thing. So to me, if we start the budget season with a fund balance of 1.8, that's a bad place to be. You were, you were at 1.6 one year, a couple of years ago, pre me, and you really, I think, were saved by the next year, enrollment went up and fund balance, I mean, enrollment went up and state aid went up, so that 1.6 got washed away by increased aid. That was a nice outcome. Also, when charter schools keep going down, that also helps hide the, hide the pain. So you could go, more fund balance, put them in, I'd tell you, tell you it's a great add, it's just, I'm not sure we can sustain it.
So if I can continue with that at this point, I know it's a little bit off of what Mr. Demano's doing, but because you did bring it up, Dr. Thornton, when you discussed this last week, there were 18 new positions, not 11. And you talked about the fund balance and using a $1 million fund balance, which time you also stated, and I believe Mr. Fiorello asked that question about the fund balance, that 500,000 from the state, if it were to come to us, would reduce that use of the fund balance by 500,000. But now it appears that you're adding further to it. So I'm just wondering, we dropped 11 positions in what was given to us tonight, our fund balance is use, is going up higher, even though you've dropped those positions, and it differs from what we discussed last week.
I think, once again, if you let him finish, you'll give us questions, he has a whole fund balance slide, but the short answer is, the 500,000, we're learning from our sources, will not be coming from the state. It's 1.6, that's our state aid. We might get a few more 100,000, because enrollment goes up, you get a bump from October 1 to March 1, but we're not seeing 500. That's a number in your budget right now, it says 1.6 and 500 state aid, it's not coming. That's now a one, that's a problem.
And my understanding was last week that, that we knew that in the budget, that's exactly what we were saying, is that, you know, if it did come, that it would reduce the fund balance use of 1 million down to 500,000, not that we're adding to it. So am I incorrect in, am I understanding from last week?
No, I, I think he was hopeful last week that we would get the 500,000, but it ju, I think it was just. Yeah, once again, I think about it in three pieces, you have the million in fund balance, you have the state aid, 500, and you have the 486K, one-tying electrical BVP money, if you will. Yeah, we can jump to that slide, but if we could finish this first, that might help add context for you.
Sure, sure. So, Mr. Smith, I can appreciate where you're coming from, because the McCourt narrative will keep coming up, I'm sure, over the next few weeks, all right? Especially if we're gonna talk about achievement. This time of year, I always think about two repelling magnetic forces, right? When you're talking about achievement and money, you know, sometimes there are oppositional forces working against one another. But as far as the middle schools are concerned, it says their NCMS would be receiving zero FTEs, C parking lot, there are some positions that were requested that, that didn't make the cut, that were originally part of the maybe conversation, and we provide that for you as well, okay? At the high school level, you see there's zero, zero FTE ads, need three. Those are the essentials positions, I think, that, that Dr. Thornton has talked to you about. I don't know if you want to interject, Dr. Thornton?
Once again, those are in your budget from last week, those are the three, while I think we really need these. Once again, it's a question of just sustainability, so I'll be asking you to consider not including them, but they're out there now, because they really need it, truly.
Continuing on, on the, in that same box, you have, under miscellaneous, you have two buildings and grounds positions. Again, I defer to the two of you to talk about that.
Why don't you take that one?
Yeah, we put those in due to staffing concerns, and this also allows us to bring a lot more work in-house, not having to sub out as much of the subbing and, the plowing and the landscaping. So that allowed us to reduce some of those purchase service line items. If those positions didn't, were to not exist, I'd have to add a lot of that money back in to cover, you know, to cover those two services, so.
Here's an example, one grass cutting at the high school is $2,000, give you a sense of it. So these people would work year-round, whether they're plowing, painting, repairing, cutting. And also, as you may know, in the budget, there are regs, we have to have so many percent of dollars set aside for asset protection. Right now, the bond helps us with that, but we, we're lacking in personnel, we're just understaffed as far as the facilities. So to me, while it may seem counterintuitive, I'm recommending this over adding to McCourt, but we really are deferring our maintenance and it's a, it's a problem.
That's a good question. Mr. McGrath, the, so if we're saving money, technically, it's an add, but we're actually saving money off the, off the general budget if we're adding these positions. Do you have any idea how much we save, just rough estimate?
It's gonna be a couple-year phase in, so I'm not super comfortable pulling all the plowing money back in the first year, just in hiccups and things like that, but that budget is approximately $40,000 alone, so if we're able to pull that in-house, that basically pays for one person. Groundskeeping's another $30,000 line, so it's basically, it will take two years to get there, but it's basically gonna be net neutral going forward, yeah.
So it's really not, I mean, so it's, for the purpose of FTE ads, it's on there, but it's really not a budget add?
In the first year it is, because you still will see some snow plowing in, in lines just in case, if we're not able to get the people or it doesn't line up right, I'm not comfortable fully pulling that out. But eventually, I hope to be able to phase that fully out, because we'll be fully in-house. So it'll be kind of like a two-year phase over, but yes, to your point, it will, it is basically budget neutral.
And I would imagine this job description, you know, some of the things that have been discussed, you know, the custodial staff is kind of overrun at the high school as well, so, you know, hypothetically, we haven't had a lot of snow in the last five years. So we haven't really, I would imagine, we haven't really tapped in our budget, so in the winter season, if they're not plowing, they can, you know, when the fieldhouse is being used, they can.
We've allowed deferred maintenance, we have things that need to be repaired, painted inside all of our buildings, and we just don't get to them in a timely manner. So this is actually a way to kind of keep up on our maintenance and all these things, changing filters of the HVAC system, all those things you have to do.
All right, thank you.
I just want to chime in. I know when I first got on the school committee, there was a lot of criticism towards the school committee and the school department prior to, prior to us, prior to the committee I was on, and Dr. Thornton was still in his first full year, I think. I know that at one time, and Mike Chandler can probably back me up on this, there were about 15 full-time maintenance employees, and we have four, five? And that's not counting custodians, right?
Yeah, significantly more.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking more plumbers, more carpenters, more electricians, and that was, all that was gutted, which is really what led to the degradation of our school buildings, which insists, which is what was the impetus for so much maintenance and construction work over the last dozen years, really. So this is, I think, very important, and I think we owe it to the taxpayers to maintain the buildings that they've really, very generously
we owe it to the taxpayers to maintain the buildings that they've really, very generously have backed, different bonds and lease agreements and everything else that we've done over the past dozen years, and what we have going on for the next four.
So continuing on, the Director of Culture and Student Services, as Dr. Thornton referenced and Mr. Collins mentioned, I didn't really provide you the job description for you to, for us to get into too in-depth tonight. It's really about maybe reflecting on after you hear what we have to say tonight, thinking about it, and then maybe bringing back some questions regarding it in subsequent meetings. So going back to the needs at McCourt, this particular position would be a district-wide position. Our district demographic is rapidly changing. And in our strategic plan, we're doing a tremendous amount of multicultural professional development and work in our district. And we're changing sort of faster than we can sort of keep up with, in a way. So there are a few reasons why we think that this position is extremely important. It is one position that I am strongly advocating for because I firmly believe that if we do not add this position, we are going to struggle. It's a high-impact position that we are going to continue to struggle at McCourt because right now, we're forced to be very reactionary in how we respond to the issues there. And teaching and learning right now is secondary to some of the other issues that are going on there. And I know what achievement Pam and her team had talked about that, and Beth Coughlin was a part of those conversations, right, that they needed to fix X, Y, and Z before they could shift that. I'm very concerned about their academic standing, and I'm gonna explain that in a second. And then I'm going to be quiet, I promise. And I'm gonna turn it over to Jamie. And I asked Jamie, for those of you that don't know Jamie well, she is our essentials coach at the middle schools, and so she runs our essentials programs. She was an ELA core teacher in the past with a very extensive charter background, and she's very, very bright. And she spends a lot of time at McCourt objectively. So I wanted her to kind of talk a little bit about the connection between what she sees and what this position could bring and some of her experiences. I'm gonna defer to her in a second. Before I do that, I provided you with a data sheet on McCourt. Because as you say, Madam Chair all the time, we try to make database decisions, right? So, by the way, this is no reflection on Pam or any of the teachers there. This is just facts, and we're trying to help them, right? So if you look at the front sheet where it says reading grades two to five, this represents our benchmarking, and we benchmark three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. Right now, we've only done fall and winter. And if you see the information on the bottom, we tried to say, so at the beginning of the year, in reading, they had roughly 97 intensive kids in their building. That represented about 22% of their population. Do you see that? Okay. That number is supposed to trend down as the year of instruction, as intervals of instruction go on. That number is supposed to trend down. You can see that their number went up to 109, which is representative of basically 25% of their population is at risk. And if we include sort of kids that aren't watched, that number is even higher. If you go to, if you go to the second page, which is, represents math, you'll see that the issue is even more profound. You have 140 kids at the beginning of the year that were struggling. And by the way, this doesn't mean proficiency. This just means readiness to learn, type of skill sets. And then you see the 35, 35%. It's gone up there, and it's trended up there as well. So now, we started out at 32% of the population, now we're up to 35% of the population at risk. We're going in the wrong direction. In fairness, they've had lots of position, empty positions. You know, they're working hard there. There were real issues there. And I'm not going to speak to them because you're the better person to do that. But we need, we need a proactive approach. We need somebody in that building resetting their culture and working with kids, working with families on a day-to-day basis that represents the culture and the demographic of what's going on there at McCourt. And if A doesn't happen, I don't believe B will happen, which is seeing an increase in results. I did mention to Dr. Thornton, we haven't discussed this at length, but at one time, when McCourt did have teaming, their scores were higher. But we haven't discussed, you know, well, is the reason why we took it away, why they went down. Not necessarily, lots of variables included. But technically, when they had teaming, their performance was higher.
This is Vogel as a question.
Sure.
So regarding this position, the Director of Culture and Student Services, do you know other districts that currently have it, in the feedback from them, how it has impacted?
So what I know is, is that there are a few districts that have versions of this particular job. It takes on, it's a very, it's multi-dimensional, and it takes on lots of different forms. And you can shape the position to kind of focus on what you need for the district. A lot of districts have DEI positions. And so a district like Pawtucket, districts like Providence, districts that are seeing lots of shit, Woonsocket, that have high incidence rates, they have their own versions of how they approach that, right? For us, because we're shifting in terms of, and we're transitioning from a culture of X to a culture of Y, and we're going sort of into this area of unknown, part of the reason why we had a strategic plan around multicultural and building our teachers' understanding of what we're up against, you know, in getting professional development to our building leaders, this position would provide sustained professional development in that regard. In my personal opinion, it can bring a lot of value, and I think it would set the structure and the foundation at McCourt. Even though it's a district-wide position with district-wide responsibilities, it's a resource that the superintendent can send into areas to help immediately. Okay? Exactly. So I'm gonna pause right there for a second, and I'm gonna, if you don't mind, if you could connect the dots for them in more in-depth, I would appreciate it.
Hello. So I work mostly between North and McCourt, and I've had quite an extensive role at McCourt, from scheduling to running lunches to dismissal. Like, there's, when I'm there, I'm there to help because it's kind of a chaos climate, and it's of no fault of Pam or the teachers. It's just the way that it's been for the last couple of years from when I was there. And so I was trying to do some research on my own to see, like, what could I bring in to these teachers, to Pam, to help out, to support this. And I found this book, and it's called, These Kids Are Out of Control: It's Why We Must Reimagine Classroom Management for Equity. And that title really struck out to me because I hear that so often at McCourt. These kids are out of control. I can't handle this. These teachers are burnt out. They're exhausted. And one of the things that really struck out to me in this book were this particular line that I'm gonna share with you. Teachers in urban settings are less likely to share racial, cultural, language, and socioeconomic backgrounds with their students. This further exacerbating this divide is what is called pedagogy of poverty, in which students, sorry, teachers may have very low expectations, and students are taught only to follow orders and directions. And what I've noticed over the last two years at McCourt in my position is that there's some common language that comes forward. The North kids can do this, but the McCourt kids can't do it. The kids are out of control. They need to follow the directions. And it's really leading to a stressful and chaotic climate in that building. And so there's a lot of deficit thinking, and in turn, the kids pick up on that. So when they're going into their schools, and there's maybe a teacher in science, maybe a sub, right? Or there's behavior issues that happen when they walk into the building, and then they have these teachers that are burned out and stretched thin, it becomes, they know that this is the wrong term to use, but their behavior is going to be more policed because we just need to get everybody in their spaces and into the classroom and behaving and following the directions. And I personally feel, from, just from what I've witnessed, the conversations that I've been a part of, that this is having a huge negative impact on the academic achievement of our students. They're not seeing themselves in their teachers or administrators. We have a very diverse population. Just this morning, I was trying to do a project for the National Junior Honor Society, and I was helping a student who speaks only Spanish, who didn't feel good, right? So like, we're just, it's putting out fires all the time, and everything is very reactionary. And so the reason why the deans or a vice principal can't handle these situations is because there's so much reactionary things that are happening. They're responding to problems constantly. If you spend time in McCourt, the walkie's going crazy, all day, because they're just running from one place to another. And in this position, where they could, these students could see somebody that looks like them in a position of power, I think would be incredible for them, to do wonders for them, to know that people believe in them, that they have also opportunities to be in leadership positions as well. But also, this could take a proactive approach towards student success. And I work closely with Chachi, who would be an excellent fit in this position. And I was able to attend one of his trainings at North. And he told this story about his father. And his dad was one of eight. He was the youngest, and he was always very loud, very like animated, kind of, you know, a wild child. And in school, he was always targeted as being disruptive. He was always targeted as being aggressive or angry. In reality, that's not what he was like. But he learned to dislike school because he was targeted as aggressive. And that story was a huge wake-up call, because I had taught at North for the three years prior to being in this position. In my first year, I had one student in particular. It was my one student of color. And she was constantly in trouble. And she was very loud, and people kind of saw her as aggressive. But she wasn't an aggressive child. It's just, when you're in a community of people who don't look like you, and don't understand your culture, or don't understand, you know, what it's like for you at home, or don't look like you, right? Like, you're going to be targeted as different and other, and maybe not even consciously. I think a lot of it is a lot of unconscious bias. And that's why I say it's no fault of the teachers, or Pam, or anybody in that building in particular. And I wouldn't say that they are targeting on purpose. It's just a matter of, we're going into these, this school, and the kids are seeing this chaos. They're hearing the things. They're absorbing the energy from their teachers that, I can't do this. I'm just gonna fail anyway, or I'm just gonna get kicked out of class anyway. So these numbers are going to get worse if it continues in the path that we're going. If we don't have teaming, if we don't have somebody in this position to support these kids, it's just going to get worse. And I, like Tony, I stress about McCourt. I'm buying books on my own to like support because I want to be able to help them. But there's only so much that we can do in our position without the support of somebody else. So I don't know if I missed anything.
Mr. Collins?
Sure.
Ms. Millie, your presentation strikes a nerve, because I work in an urban school district, obviously, so I've seen it firsthand. I do have a couple of questions, though.
Yep.
A couple of comments you made about, some of the comments that are made at McCourt regarding the North kids, et cetera. Who's making these comments? Is it students, teachers, parents? I know you're gonna toe line. Is it a combination of everything?
I would say it's a combination of everything. But it's, I mean, it's, the kids feel that way, and they say things. Like, I run the National Junior Honor Society, for example, and the kids have asked me in JHS, well, does North have more kids, right? They're expecting that the kids from North are gonna have more academic success. So they see it, but we also see it in mapping as well, where the teachers, and I can't blame them, right? Because it's so chaotic and reactionary, there are some things that just can't get done because they don't have enough teachers, and they don't have the space or the staffing to support these issues that are happening, that there is this mindset among the teachers that, you know, this, we can do, you can do that at North, right? But you can't do that at McCourt.
Well, my fear is that, you know, this is, happens in a lot of schools like this that I've been part of. It becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy. It's like, we're the bad school. So, you know, another, you mentioned the book, These Kids Are Out of Control. Another book that people should be reading is The Danger of Low Expectations. So one thing, I would, since we're in a budget meeting, I would also suggest, regardless of who's responsible, I don't know if there's money in the budget, I've gone through these trainings before about the impact of bias and implicit bias, and perhaps, you know, this could be a good professional development. Because, you know, and I had to learn, obviously, I reek of white privilege. I understand that, and that was one of the things I had to learn. But it was very helpful for me as an educator, understanding what kids see when I'm delivering, even though I don't see it in myself. And I think, I feel that it's made me a better educator. It can be a sensitive subject for teachers, too, especially veteran teachers who have been successful or just done things a certain way. But I think, you know, PD is not as expensive as this, but I think that might be something that would be very useful for teachers. You know, because obviously, I bet if you had a wish list, there's all sorts of jobs, social workers, community facilitators, all that other stuff. But I think a short fix would just be on the front lines, the teachers going through a training, so they can understand those things, and the impact it has, especially on students of color, or kids who come from lower socioeconomic backgrounds. Thank you.
It's one connection to make. I know last fiscal meeting, we are gonna bring number 36 back next time. That's that kind of PD they're doing. That's that stuff.
So in addition to that, so Chachi, Jillian, Rosanna, and I are being trained as anti-racist trainers. So we are going through, I think it's a two-year-long course. We've been doing it at nights to be trainers for our district in anti-racism. So it's an anti-racist train the trainer, and it's been really helpful. And Jillian has started some of the PDs in culturally responsive leadership, which has been excellent. And we're translating that. One of the focuses that I've been working on in my workshops is specifically geared towards McCourt. But across the four of us, we have a vision of being able to bring that to the teachers and the students as well.
I do have one more question, though. Perhaps this is something, and Ms. Dreszek isn't here either. Do you know what efforts, and I think one of the challenges, too, is, you know, you're looking for, so, you know, Director of Culture and Student Services, but finding teachers who look like the students is, unfortunately, is like finding a needle in a haystack, especially, you know, in this area, especially with what we pay, and, you know. I find in Massachusetts, it's hard to find, because, you know, there's so, there's such demand, that they can go to Boston and make $30,000 more a year. What efforts, do we have any extra efforts we make as a district to draw, to promote a diverse educator?
I can't speak for Ms. Dreszek as far as extra efforts, but we do make every effort to get all kinds of applicants in. But right now, in some cases, it's hard to get even any applicants for some positions. As you know, like McCourt Science, for example, this year, right? So it really depends. My one point of optimism is, I mentioned earlier, a lot of towns are closing schools and cutting. We're maybe potentially adding something. So I think we'll get more applicants. Case in point, I was at a Cake Wars event on Tuesday, and I was approached by two people who want to apply here, who work somewhere else in Rhode Island, who want to come back to Cumberland. So I think we're gonna get more applicants. It may be a different situation next fall.
On that same note, part of the responsibilities of this particular position, if we can land the appropriate person, and you've heard Jamie reference a particular individual who we have hired to do work with us, who is enigmatic personality, who if you ask around objectively in the different buildings, he's done professional development in the different buildings. Having someone like him could open the doors for opportunity for teachers to want to come into a district like ours, to teach in a district like ours. You know, I've had this conversation with former colleagues coming from an intercity charter school, having been an intercity student and administrator and teacher, primarily for my, the primary portion of my career. I've had several conversations with teachers, you know, of ethnicity and color. And, you know, we can, we can have conversations about some of the trepidation around, you know, why it's so difficult for communities like us to get that representation. So I think this could be a transitional and transformative position to help us move in the right direction. I also, I'm not going to go down a rabbit hole, but Jamie mentioned this anti-racism training as part of our strategic plan and what we're doing. Mr. Fiorello and I have had these conversations. The district, dealing with Title Line opens me up to a lot of different things, and I can see a lot of vulnerabilities that pop up in our discipline. The district, dealing with Title Nine opens me up to a lot of different things, and I can see a lot of vulnerabilities that pop up in our disciplinary system and so on and so forth. And so, uh, one of the things that I feel like it's my job to advocate if I see a vulnerability is, is, you know, how do we deal with a situation where, um, racism or a racist type of situation comes up, or is alleged against one of our students, right? And so how we handle those situations, Beth Koffler and I were having this conversation today. So, we need to be proactive around how we handle those types of situations, because I feel like it's a vulnerability for us currently. And, and having internal professional development could help us, um, be better at, better prepared to handle those types of situations. I just wanted to frame why we're doing that PD. Any, any further questions about this?
I, yeah, Ms. Smith? I, um, I mean, I know this is, I know you have another slide, and Dr. Thornton said wait till we see those, the other slide too. But, I feel really strongly that we need to be addressing McCourt. And, we are seeing achievement increases in the feeder schools to McCourt, which we then expect, you know, we would want to then see the impact that that has. But, we've gotta find, we've, we've gotta find a way to get out of this inequity that we have. But something I wanted, not, I wouldn't say devil's advocate, but if we look at BVP as an example, which prides itself, I would say, on culture. But their achievement results have not been, have been kinda taken in the last few years. So, it's, you know, it's like, okay, so they've got this really strong culture, I think, in what they say anyways, but the achievement isn't matching that. Yes, well, I don't know, who, yes.
So last week, when I was talking to Tim, I think I didn't sleep one night thinking about this kind of thing. It's in my budget right now, the four McCourt positions are in the budget. But, I'm thinking about sustainability. And, we can make some, some budget assumptions to kinda think, okay, you know the commercial, the guy with the chainsaw, he's gotten a, eh, a couch and a half, it's about the lottery. He may be a winner. He's gotten the furniture in half, no? But, we could make more assumptions and keep these in, it's just a scary place to be for me, so, just to, I'm s-
How do we ever get to it?
Stay with me, so, if we have a million in fund balance, we have the 468K from, uh, our electric bill that we got back, and the governor's shortfall of state aid, that's two million round numbers. Say we only cut three jobs, that's the high school three, let's say, so it's one, seven of one-time money, right? I mean, right now, we're assuming BVP is gonna be level at three point one million. We could assume they keep dropping, we gain another four hundred K, that's a pretty scary assumption to make. Now, if we don't get it, we're one, seven to the bad. Having said that, you did go one, six fund balance one year, and you erased the sin with more state aid and more enrollment. It's just a, it's something you could put in, and just maybe a year from now, you're like, you know what, we can't sustain it. But, it is worthy to put in, it's just a question of what's your risk tolerance for fund balance? Or cut something else correspondently, right?
Other comments? Yeah, Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Dr. Thornton, could you bring back to us for next week, putting those four in, in the teaming, what do the classroom sizes and structure will look like? If we can get more in-depth look, um, with those four? Because I understand the whole teaming and, and what that means, but if teachers are exasperated in their classrooms, I have to think that size and structure plays into that. And I'd like to see what that is and how those ratios could be used in any thought of improvements. If we, you know, we have to weigh whether or not we're going to add another whole position, uh, for the Director of Culture and Serv- Student Services.
We'll give you class sizes without and with.
Right, so what would that structure look like? If we're, if we're putting in four, if we do put in four FTE from McCourt, and we go into the teaming, and we set up that structure, what does that mean for our classroom sizes? Is it more manageable? And can't four teachers help the other teachers and not hinder them? Where we could do outside training classes, or if we get the one hour back on the Wednesdays, or whatever it may be, that we're able to, you know, use some of that time for training and doing some of those training things that we need, and spending that concentrated time that we need, um, as Mrs. Friedman's talking about, it, there's a definite need here.
I, I agree, I would say as you drive home and think about other things we can cut. Will's not here now, lumber, paint. Um, you know, but what else would you go after to make up four hundred K? Or make some more budget assumptions, make a bigger assumption on something. Like, right now, we have, we'll hear later on, electricity, heat, natural gas. We make assumptions based on current burn rates and all that. You, you can make more assumptions, but our budget guy will tell you, don't make anything, any risky assumption. It, it's a sweet spot, once again, what's your risk tolerance, that's it. But it's great stuff what they're talking about here.
I do, and I don't wanna, uh, put words in your mouth, Ms. Miller, uh, but, but I think, I understand the, the ask, and I, I mean, in a perfect world, but I think, I recognize the importance of this position. Because, school culture is interwoven with student achievement. When you see what you and I see on a daily basis. This idea, we could have, I, in my opinion, we, you could have, you could have ten interventionists at McCourt. But the students who are struggling, you know, it'll help, maybe move the needle a little bit. But promoting school culture gets buy-in. So kids, you know, so a lot of times, you know, one of the biggest indicators, as you're aware, of student achievement, isn't how many interventionists, really, it comes from home. Families who value education produce students who do, you know, doesn't mean they have to have straight A's, but they understand the value in the education. So, and I don't wanna make this into a ratio, to me, it's, it's, it's a kind of a socioeconomic, I think, I think this is, in my experience, these students may not have that kind of motivation from home, some of them, some of them do. So it's much easier, especially when they're struggling, especially at that middle school age, they act out because maybe they don't understand, or they, it's easier to get kicked out of class than it is to fight through a math problem or, or a word problem. And, uh, I think, so I do think, I just wanna make sure, and I'm not implying that anybody was saying that, student achievement is interwoven with school culture, especially with, in, in an urban school district like that. So I think it's gonna help move the achievement needle as well, in addition to some of the other supports we have. Thank you.
I just wanna respond to that, and in addition to what you had brought up. I think that it's a long-term process. I think that a position like this, um, Director of Culture and, and Services would also help with the family engagement. And I think that it does, you know, it's gonna take a long time, I think, to see major gains, but even just small things make a difference. Having teachers, having teachers that know that we're putting effort, money, time, investment into McCourt, and the success of the teachers and the students will bring positivity to the culture there, I think that makes a difference. You know, I, um, I just wanna share a little anecdote, but in NJHS, we are doing this like shooting stars thing to kinda shift the narrative around state testing from being anxious about it and being stressed about it, to feeling confident that the kids have the skills to be successful. And so we've asked teachers to highlight students that maybe don't get the shout-outs, maybe aren't an NJHS student. Um, and we put their name on a star, and we put it in the library window. And the amount of students that have stopped by and been like proud of themselves to say, "We've had kids taking pictures, you know, can you send this to my mom?" Like, that, those types of little things, and that's just one small thing that I was able to bring in. And I'm not saying that I can go in and change everything and shift everything. But those small impacts of, of being recognized and feeling like you have people behind you who believe in you, who, who know you can do well, make it a, a strong impact on these kids. And I think that having this position, in addition to having a full team of teachers with smaller class sizes, who are, who know that there is dedication to the success of their school, will make it a huge impact. And, and I think probably sooner rather than later, but I do think it'll take a long time.
Ms. Smith and then Mr. Collins.
Sorry about that. Dr. Thornton, could you maybe perhaps bring to us next week to, um, the truancy levels? And where we've been trending with that and how that's been going? Because I know that we're spending a lot of time, uh, you know, visiting homes and, I know that they've been working to try to take care of some of the absentee issues that we've been having at McCourt. But if we have some type of understanding of what's been wrapped around it for this year and how we're trending, that, that could really help in understanding the whole dynamic.
So, Mike, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you were talking about a statistic that was kinda staggering the other day about referrals, right? Wasn't there some like ridiculous ratio between the two middle schools? I don't remember what the numbers were, but it was, uh, pretty extensive, right? Like in the thousands to the hundreds? That was the ratio between the two schools. So we're talking thousands of referrals versus hundreds of referrals, uh, between the two middle schools. So I thought that was relevant, yeah.
And that's part of, that's part of what I'm asking, right?
That's why I mentioned it.
Yeah, and I know that when we looked at the school safety reports, and we've had the number of incidents and things like that, we actually have seen high numbers coming from North Carolina Middle School as well, which we hadn't seen before. And I'm hoping that by the time we get the next reports that those have dropped back down again. But, yeah, all the, all this plays into and factors into what we're looking at, um, overall, and what it's going to mean to the budget. And, as Dr. Thornton said, we're gonna have to think about where we're gonna have cuts or not cuts. This is a concerning area, a big concerning area.
Yeah, and I think also, actually, now that you've mentioned that with the referrals, I think that's where the training comes in too. Where, whereas a teacher, I've seen this, where you identify something as a behavior, but there's something more into the behavior, maybe there's something going on at home, and, you know, you can avoid a referral by bringing a kid out of the hallway and says, "Everything okay, why don't you just take a time out? Get, collect yourself, if we have a school psychologist, they could get the kid back into the classroom." That avoids a referral altogether, and the kid's back in the classroom. But also, I think, you know, you, you mentioned, Ms. Miller, it's gonna take some time. So when I look at it, when you see, I've seen kids who are like, you know, are down to the urgent intervention level. If you get, if they get some buy-in, you know, within one year, they may go, they're not gonna go from urgent to, you know, exceeding expectations, but they start moving upward. And if they have a brother or sister who's coming up through the system, there's buy-in, or, you know, "Ms. Miller's a good teacher, you should listen to her." She's, "No, no, no, she's not me." There's some buy-in there, and then the brother's doing better, and then we're, we're not just promoting the numbers, we're moving the ship in a completely different direction by shifting that culture. And that's, you know, culture's something I think is often misunderstood at the education level, it sounds like a catchphrase or whatever. But again, I can't re- overemphasize, it's tied in with student achievement. This culture of success, you know what I mean? Like, the Patriot way, or we should have a McCourt way, like, no matter who the teacher is, no matter who the students are, when they come in there, they know that this is the best opportunity, and you're, you're part of this movement to, to achieve. And, uh, so, I appreciate, you know, your comments, and they're definitely, I take them by heart, so thank you.
I just wanna add to that, that this is, I'm very much a middle school person, I love middle schoolers, but this is like, this is a really critical time. If we're not catching these kids up now, it's only going to get worse. And the numbers at the high school are gonna, it's gonna be a disaster. So this is a really critical time.
And it's, it's the long-term success too, I, I just had this conversation, I, I had a student, he was a sophomore, but he was, you know, he'd been falling through the cracks, and he's sixteen years old, and he's reading at a third grade level. And I remember having this conversation with the kid last year, and I'm like, you know, I know, and he was getting in trouble and all this stuff, I said, "My concern isn't just now, MCAS in Massachusetts. My concern is that when you're twenty-six, you're still reading at a third grade level, and at thirty-six, reading at a, and then he's gonna have children, you know, and then it's generational." So it's more than just test scores, it's more, you know, it's, you know, the service we provide society and why we have public education in general. You know, we're as only strong as our weakest link.
That's right, the test score is merely the, the outcome of the system, that's all it is.
I, I just wanted to go back to the ask that Ms. Smith made, Dr. Thornton, of the class sizes. Mrs. Rogowski was reminding me over here on the side about the teaming model at McCourt would get us to a place where we could redistrict as well.
That's correct.
And so then the class, so then what's that, you know, there's one thing about what's the class size today, as is, but then, we eventually wanted to make a switch there.
I would just say bottle all this, where you are right now, I was a month ago, and now it's, how do we make it work budgetarily? I am with you, it's just, I don't want the fund balance so high, we can't sustain it. That's the, the next time, that, next time we meet, I guess, but that's the thing.
Tim, could you go to the next slide that way?
Oh, you have it, sorry. Uh, actually, Dr. Thornton really talked about number one, so we really have to, we don't really have to, uh, talk about that. Under number two, I just wanted to put it up there because I think during budget conversations, it's really important to understand that we don't only look to add, we look for internal opportunities to shift resources where necessary. ESAR allowed us to be able to provide two, uh, reading and two math interventionists at McCourt. But, NCMS would end up at the end of this year with zero. Um, and by law, we can't do that. Uh, meaning that their interventionists currently are in the SR budget, because we were trying to avoid budget issues back when SR was put in place. So we took the interventionists at NCMS there. And what we're going to do is shift over, so instead of McCourt having two interven- math interventionists, reading interventionists, each school will have one. We feel like because we have, and Dr. Thornton has made a concerted effort, you as a school committee, to preserve our essentials program, we feel like between the two, we can make that work without having a budget added. So we just wanna let you know that we, we also look to shift resources, not just keep adding on taxpayer dollars. So, alright?
Friedman, do my talking, um, that, I, I understand, that seems counterintu- that, yes, that word, counterintuitive. If we wanna improve, we're pulling interventionists out of McCourt.
I can, I can explain that though. So, why it's not counterintuitive is, is, is that if you're able to add certain things to that building, we feel like we could restructure essentials with the numbers, whereas the, in, the one interventionist at McCourt, um, in math and in reading, could handle the intensive students, and we could retrofit a model where, um, some of the essentials focus, if you, if you kinda think of performance on a continuum, the kids that are nearing proficiency but could straddle a tier-three kind of more intensive look, we could sort of retrofit essentials because we have an essentials coach to help make sure that we're hitting all of their kids. Dr. Thornton referenced, you know, we can't have everything, NCMS can't go without, that would be adding two additional positions to the, to the budget. If you wanted to do that. It's to the pleasure of the superintendent and the committee, uh, but we feel like with some of these other things happening, that we could, we could help McCourt out, and we wouldn't see, you know, intervention numbers skyrocketing. That's all. If I felt like it was an academic problem, I wouldn't present it to you. Uh, if, that's true too, there's, there's also only one functioning reading interventionist there now, and they don't have, their third essential's the LA person, or do they? They do, okay. Got it. Parking lot are just positions, some positions that were asked for. That kinda made like the first cut for the superintendent, and then were kinda placed aside in terms of priority, based on the other, in lieu of the positions that you saw on the other sheet. So basically, these were some of the other asks that kinda made like a second cut for the superintendent that he had to take into consideration. So I won't get too much into that, I'll just use one example. The math interventionist at Garvin, they have two math and two reading, uh, two math and one and a half reading. One of those was in ESAR, they would go down to one, I looked at their numbers today. While Michelle would love to maintain two, and they've made great math gains. We feel data-wise that, um, if they didn't get that add, it wouldn't, it would be nice to keep, but it wouldn't be the end of the world for Garvin. Sorry, Michelle. But, uh, based on the other needs that we have in the district. So that's one, one other, uh, example. I won't expand too much on that unless you, you, you want me to. We're just kinda restating some of the obvious there.
Mr. Rogowski?
Just one thing, with the new requirement coming online next year for the class of 2028, for every graduating student to have two years of a foreign language, are we going to have enough foreign language positions at the high school to handle all that volume? I realize they're hard, they're almost impossible to hire everywhere in the state, and everywhere will be hiring.
The high school, yes, but ideally, we wanted to add at the middles, cause you can also get the experience at the middle level. So if we had added point five, point five at both middles, we could offer more, and the kids would actually get some of that experience at the middle level. Once again, it's just choices. We had it, we want it, but I'm wrestling with the other things. But, um, that's our challenge, but right now, we want to add the middle. It's needed. Also, just down below, as you know, it's a little confusing, but now, the Director of Culture and Student Services is on our list, we'll talk about next week, of what we wanna put in. And down below, you know, if you wanna keep the middle school McCourt in, it's already in the budget, you would just maybe knock out the three high school ones I had, you'd consider, right? So that's all, but right now, those are all in, it's an eighteen add right now. It's an 18 add right now.
I'm not sure what's on the next slide. I think, I think I'm done, but I'm good? All right.
Now it's back to the budget.
Thank you. And I'll clean up that sheet for you and get that other information.
And thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, so I just wanted to circle back to a question that was asked earlier, along with kind of just a quick synopsis of how I look at the budgets versus, and present them. So when I look at the budgets and expense data and revenue data, I look at what's called the major object, and you'll see a little arrow pointing to it right there. So to your point earlier about where's the charter school data? So if we look at our object codes, you'll see an object code 55660 on the main summary data, the, the main detail there. And then if you jump to the detail of page six.
Page six.
So that one. That's the main summary, that's the full budget. That's last.
At your places tonight. That's a copy.
Not bad. No, I don't think so.
No? Did you? Okay. Yeah, also should have been included last week, too. There was a, a main summary that breaks out by object code. Yeah, that's fine. But anyway, so if we look at the detail, like page six, you'll see, you'll see a subtotal for 55660 of the $3.2 million, and above that, that's the detail of every single charter school we pay to. So if you wanted to know how much we're budgeting for BVP, you look at, you know, R-I-M-A-B-V, and that $3 million number. So each of my object codes is broken out in my detail, the 13-page detail. So if you had any questions about an individual object code, you see, the detail is right there. Along with the personnel supplement also includes that detail. So I know Fiscal Sub has seen my new monthly report, so I just wanted to make sure the full committee understands the way I structured the budget.
So this is from last week.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, that's the full summary data, yep. That's the detail that backs it up.
So if you want to see what makes up that number, you go to the detail.
Yep, correct, yep. So I just wanted to make sure everyone kind of understood that concept.
Oh, I see.
So yeah, if you were looking through the main, and you're like, what's, what's all this water? You can go and kind of look at it. Or any of those different object codes, you'll see the breakout. So I just wanted to kind of, high level, kind of give you that detail. All right, so I just wanted to circle back quickly to FY '23, just give the full committee an understanding of where FY '23 landed, so then we understand the fund balance and understand where we're going. So just at a quick high level, FY '23 ended with a $969,000 surplus. That's great news. That was mainly driven by a capital lease payment that was budgeted, but really didn't need to make. The town made that payment. So that pretty much drove that full $900,000. But as you can see, we just have summarized data of the, here's the town appropriation, state aid, federal money, master lease revenue, and then a breakdown of all my major object codes here. So, so I just, so just so you see that, so there's the $900,000, and then we rolled that forward into our conversation around fund balance. So if we rewind even further to the FY '21, so FY '21, coming to the school department ended with a $6 million fund balance, okay? So Dr. Thornton referenced this FY '22 deficit, so, right? So FY '22 ended in a deficit of $1.6 million. So that leaves us with a $4.4 million fund balance at the end of FY '22. And at that time, this was the allocation that was passed by the committee as part of the budget. So of that, we said $725,000 is going to be earmarked for the FY '23 budget, and then here's your capital allocations and all those different allocations we had, leaving a designated fund balance of $3.1 million. So as Mr. Field mentioned, that, that's dictated by policy. We can't have anywhere more than 4%. It automatically gets dumped into capital, and that percentage is of the audited expenses. So I'll circle back to that in a second, right? So if we take the 4.4 that we discussed, and then we add that 900, that's how we end up at the 5.3 that we are currently sitting on as a fund balance. So as we roll that forward, right, so I'm sitting on 5.3, I'm currently, as part of the budget, around $800,000 of that is slated to be used as part of the, the budget that was previously passed. So there's your 725 and your 75. At this point, I'm doing projections to see if that's the case, but I'm going to just, I'm going to hold that as, as that was as part of the budget, so I'm going to assume that we're going to use that. That'll play out over the summer as to where that lands, but for sakes of this, we'll just assume that that's what is going to happen. So that leaves us with, I'm estimating at the end of '24, this fiscal year, that will have a $4.5 million budget, uh, fund balance. So what that means is if we, if we, as part of the '24 budget, allocate a million dollars, we haven't used the 250 of IT yet, we're limited to the 4% of our '23 expenses, right? So I put that down here. So that means that number can't be any more than $2.8 million. By policy, the remaining has to get dumped into capital. So that's what would happen there. Then if we assume we spend the million dollars, this is where our fund balance would end up after, after next year's budget of that million-dollar fund balance being used.
I can just jump in right here, too. Think of it this way, too, if, if, we talk about a lot, it's the multiple years conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's a million this year, plus that money helps us this year for electricity, for the 468, next year, we need a million five just to break even on fund balance. Plus, the state aid doesn't come in, we would need a million seven, a million eight just to break even next year in '25, '26.
Yes. Yeah, so that, yeah, what basically that just shows is the, as you like to say, the credit card balance, just we're, we're reusing it up, but we're still within the 2% to 4%. So I, it's, it, it sounds bad, but we have built up a pretty substantial fund balance. And I did, I did just, as I looked at things, did notice that we have used it in the past. But obviously, like you said, it can't be something that's reoccurring, so. So that's the main general fund balance. I just want to quickly discuss the health and dental fund balances. I know that's been discussed in the past. So currently, the current reserves sit at a million dollars. As of last year's budget, there was $1.4 million. So what that tells me is we've been spending down that reserve. It's recommended by the consultants that we have two months of payments in reserve. So currently, the monthly payments are around a half million dollars. So that million dollars is right where we want to be. They're currently recommending a 3% increase in health insurance, which is factored into the budget. So I just wanted to make that, you know, so we're right where we need to be. If we choose to buy that down, we run the risk of reducing this reserve again. So like, if I look at last year, we had a 1% increase in health insurance that was collected. That's what caused this $400,000 reduction. So we collected less than went out, because we're a self-funded model, so we literally directly pay the doctors and prescriptions and all that stuff. So we literally spent $400,000 more than was collected. So at this point, we really can't buy this down much because we're right where we want to sit with a fund balance. So any further drawdown will cause issues there. So that's why I'm holding the 3% on the budget. All right, so then we'll circle to the revenue. So Dr. Thornton has referenced the half a million dollars, which sits right here. So when we look at the, the overall picture right now, this, this is the same that we asked for, for the town from last year. This would be the proposed increase of 2.5%. So we're asking for an additional 2, $1.2 million. This is the state aid that was issued by the governor's budget, which is subject to change. So we plugged the 500 in here expecting an additional amount. It sounds like it's not going to be 500. It could be closer to $200,000. So in reference to earlier about the additional job cuts and reducing our fund balance. So in theory, if we reduce our, if we were to cut all seven of the jobs that the superintendent mentioned tonight, that would reduce our expenses by $700,000. That would eliminate the need for this additional state aid, and would also, so 700,000 would then also reduce this million dollars by $250,000, pending that the mayor and the town council were to give us the full funding. So that's where the reduction in those additional seven jobs will reduce our need on fund balance and also the additional state aid. We do expect there will be a little more state aid, but just not that full half a million dollars. So that's the main drivers of the budget revenue, and then other smaller items. We're not seeing any major fluctuations in added district tuitions or preschool tuitions or anything like that. So I've kept that pretty level. Is there any questions on the revenue? All right. I don't know if you wanted to jump into this piece of it.
This, the source, Tim, tell me again. It was from Rye Pack.
Rye, Rye themselves.
Rye, Rye. So it's four quadrants representing all the school districts in Rhode Island. You want to be in the upper-left quadrant. Upper-left quadrant means you're a high-scoring Rye Cast district and you're, you're a low per pupil expenditure. If you want to get the bang for your buck, you come to Cumberland. Look who we are. Upper-left quadrant, all the way over. Bottom-right quadrant, not where you want to be. You're expensive and you're low achieving. So that was put out by, by the state, and it's just really telling, it, I mean, we know this, right? But just, it's interesting to see who's in the upper-left, and the far-left, that's us, right? If you're more to the right, you're more expensive.
Dr. Thornton, I would imagine we're, based on, that's '21, '22, we're probably, based on last year's number, we're probably further in the upper-left.
You are correct. We'd be higher upper-left corner. You are correct. Very astute. We are upper-left, more so.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Game respects game. Yeah, thank you.
We just wanted you to see that. It's what you already know, but it's interesting to see it, right?
Yeah, and then to back that up, so this is, we love per-student data, so per-student expenditures, so here Cumberland is right here. If we take out, so I, I just find this interesting. If we look at per-student spending, it's around $16,000 a student. If we take out the money that goes to charter schools, that number reduces to $15,000. So just to reiterate, that's $1,000 a student is going out the door that's not even touching our, our children. So I just, that just jumps out to me every time I look at it. Once again, we're in the bottom half. Also, I did notice when I compare to charter schools, we are lower than our neighbors down the road. So we're outperforming and also more efficient, so.
So I guess just to wrap up, we certainly go back to our questions. I know there's a lot to take in. It's just, once again, competing interests in what's your risk tolerance? And what do you want to project? We can give you more detail, like what we think natural gas is going to be, electricity, busking contract, all these things. And then you may want to think about, you know, what variables or budget drivers do you want to maybe be more aggressive on? And, you know, and knock down, right? So that's, that's really what it is. It's just your tolerance, even town aid. We don't know we're getting 2.5% from the town. That's our, our ask. It could be one and a half, and then that's another $400,000 to the bad on the number, right? So it's all that together, and also leaving a little wiggle for the summer, if we get an extra K, an extra grade two somewhere, right? That has to go on the number, too. So we can't be so high in fund balance that we can't recover. But also, to your point, we all love the McCourt adds, right? So how do you find the sweet spot? That's the question. And once again, keep watching the news. Our challenge is, we're looking what to add, and how much of our savings account do we want to use? Other towns are closing buildings next year because ESSR is going away, and it's really causing a problem statewide.
And I just want to add, not only are some districts closing buildings, but if you read the news, Pawtucket this past week, the school committee made comments about their finances near my district in Brockton. Last year, $12 million just missing. And I think, you know, it's been in the news, too, about ESSR funding drying up and stuff. You know, even before Mr. McGrath, remember, we had these budget meetings, and Alex Prignano was here and we're talking. So I think it's really important that we have these meetings, so we, we know where we are. This is why, and I've told people in the community this, we know where we're at with our budget projections, so we don't have to, as school committee members, explain to the public, the press, or whomever, why are we missing money? You know what I mean? So, you know, we've had some time, we've had to make some tough decisions, and we may have to make them this year with finances. But long-term, it, it gives us sustainability. We don't have a large industrial base, commercial base where we can draw from funding. So when we raise revenue on the town side, that's real money that impacts people's lives. You know, people complain, you know, like, "My kids don't even go to school." You know, our strongest asset in this town is obviously the public schools, and we're getting a bang for the buck. And, but we're also not in a situation where it's dire, where we're having massive layoffs like Brockton or some of these other districts are facing. So I really appreciate the effort, and obviously, everybody here, these budget meetings are so very important in, in the collaboration with the town. So, you know, we've seen even locally in years past, where there's such a disconnect between the school department and the town, where people advocating for the school have to go down to town hall, and, you know, it gets, it can be very contentious. So over, you know, my time in the committee, I've seen just more of a relationship, you know, we're not, we don't ask for anything unrealistic, and we keep seeing the success. So, you know, so thank you for all your hard work. I mean, we do obviously have a lot of work to be done to approve a final budget to submit to the town, but I think this was a good step tonight, so.
Also, I guess as you're thinking about this to our next meeting, if you can come up with other budget driver things we're not thinking of, we would welcome that. In this budget, just for full disclosure, we're not factoring in enrollment going up again next year like it did this year. It could, and that'd be great, because that would help pay for our labor contracts as they go forward, right? We're not factoring BVP going down more, but it certainly could, and that'd be great for us, right? So those things, if they continue, that can help us kind of like keep moving, like having that momentum. But if state aid, what we're to level out, and the charter leveled out, and we have costs going up, that's the, where I have just the sustainability. So yeah, it's all good. It's just, like I said, we have a problem of what adds, and it's a good problem to have, quite honestly, compared to my colleagues I've talked to around the state. But I, I would welcome any insight you, you all have into like some efficiencies. For example, we're looking at statewide busing, take some runs back. We factored that assumption in, of saving 50K in the bus contract. It's already baked in. We think we'll take back three runs, two or three. So we're trying to put in assumptions that we think we can, we can deliver on.
Ms. Smith?
So, Dr. Thornton, I had a few things that I have been trying to look at as well in discussions. One of them, of course, everybody was talking so highly about the busing. I'm not, it looks like there's an additional bus added in to the numbers, 26, where we've only had 25 out there scheduled last year. So if we could maybe understand and look at that more closely, because is there a bus that we're missing somewhere that we're not aware of, or?
Far as I know, it's 26 this year, 26 next year. It's a 350K add in the budget, overall, for the contract, potentially, if you approve it.
If you look at the busing schedules, there's only 25. There's no bus number 32.
Yeah, I can check that. It might be another bus we run somewhere else. We'll give 26 in the fleet. I can check that for you. I'll put it on my homework sheet.
Right, and then it is, the buses are per-day use, if I'm correct, right? Because I know that one of the buses, it does Mercy Mount and Community only, so it has two depot stops, and then it does a Community run, you know, and I can see with timing where that can be a concern, but the efficiencies, as you said, and certainly looking at that number. The other question I had with the busing is related to the preschool. So are we only busing the special needs? Because right now, for the preschool, we're not busing all students. It's the students that are in the preschool program that are, that have special needs that we're required to do because they're that three to 21-year age.
Yes, also, I know, we do have a question on time next year, being at the community school for, for the year, but yes, that's our current, our busing model's not changing for, for a preschool.
And are we using one of the nine special buses, the special education buses, for those students as well to meet the criteria of seat belts and lifts and all of those other requirements?
We currently need all the requirements. We meet them all.
So, we are using those buses for the preschool, then?
If you want, I can check which buses in the fleet are used.
Okay. Yep, that would be great. And then, the other thing, when I was researching that part of it, because I wanted to see if there were any savings related to the preschool and how we were doing it, I just wanted to read through everything.
Actually, probably not a savings, but when we finally do make the leap to being an independent school, if you will, that's why you have the nurse, the custodian, the secretary, those are, you just have to have those.
Right. And then, the other question I had on that, too, was, as I was reading through, which, if you look through and you try to read through anything on the state site, there's hundreds of interlinks, or thousands in this case, there was something in there about state grant funding. So, there's additional funding that goes for special needs students in each area that the state has, and I'm just wondering how that factors into our state funding.
All I know right now is with the funding formula, there is talk at Capitol Hill, maybe some tweaks to the formula for maybe MLL, that kind of thing, special ed, because while we're having our situation here, other towns are in massive deficits, so they have to maybe, while the governor didn't fully fund the formula, there is talk of maybe making some allowances in the formula for subgroups to give us a few more dollars. But, I think we're still waiting for that.
Yeah, and I'll go back and I'll look at that one because I thought it was interesting, the wording. I just don't know how many links, and I'm sure Mr. Adams will probably know more of that information on all of it, but it looked like there was other funding that was available and that's outside of the funding formula related to students with special needs. So, it'd be interesting to know if that's really the case, and...
I think what you're talking about is there's a conversation around giving more funds for high-need special education students, and they have a percentage in a formula, and they might tweak that formula, is what I'm hearing.
Just one more question. Have any of the other superintendents or has anybody gotten together and had discussions on how the governor has pulled back on the funding formula without the funding formula being changed when it's part of the general legislation, regulations now, and whether or not there's a legal issue that's happening?
As I understand it, for seven years, it was in RIGL as far as the formula from Brown University.
Still is on there.
We're past those seven years, so technically, you know, while it's still a formula, do we have a formula? Because in the old days, there was no formula. Technically, you know, I think after seven years, there is some latitude that they want to not follow, but they cannot follow it. He's the governor. But, it was not followed.
It was just wondering because, and I know that, I know that General Assembly has tried to get the formula changed, which would be more beneficial for, with MLL and things like that, like you said, and the governor just taking the funding away definitely goes against the regulations that are in place.
In terms of my colleagues, talking to them and talking to people at the state I talk to, they're kind of like of the mind of like, you've got more money, right? I'm like, we've got 129 more kids, we were shorted.
Right.
I have more customers. Different problem we have in the towns that are closing buildings. I think people look at like us and kind of say, why are you complaining? You're getting more funding. But, my point is, we have more kids coming every month, and we need the full amount.
More kids and we're funding a second school.
So, I guess, you know, certainly for next time, if you have other homework assignments, text us, call us, we'll add to our homework list. And, like I said, we can, really, the work is, as Tim said, you know, it's mainly personnel towards the budget, but there are budget drivers, we can take you through utilities, all those things, and see if there's something you want to maybe be more aggressive on. It's just, once again, like I said, the, once you have a broken record, it's the risk tolerance for how much do you want to have on the credit card.
All right, well, this is a good starting point for us. We have, we have two more meetings scheduled for next week. I think we should have the one on Tuesday. We scheduled them just in case we need them. I think we have some questions from tonight that we could come back Tuesday for. The goal would be to vote on this at the open meeting next Thursday, because...
I think it's Wednesday, Madam Chair.
I think we have one for Tuesday and Wednesday.
Yeah, Tuesday, Wednesday.
We have Tuesday and Wednesday, and then we have the open meeting Thursday.
Thank you.
Yeah, because then it needs to be submitted, whatever that date is after that, that Monday.
Yeah, keep in mind, we have Good Friday and Good Friday, too, right? Yeah.
Madam Chair, if I could make a request, and this may be a legal thing, we have to ask Steve. We kind of laughed at, like, I was doing my minutes, and perhaps, I don't know if there's any legal obligation to have a joint meeting since we're all here anyway. It seems kind of redundant that both Ms. Friedman, I mean, Ms. Smith and I have both, I'm taking notes for fiscal, and we're about to do public comment, and we're going to have to both adjourn, even though the information's the same. So, I, I mean, my point is, perhaps, we have time, we have the 48 hours to consolidate the agenda just to make it one meeting. It's just a logistical thing, it doesn't impact...
Like, for Tuesday? Yeah, next week.
Yeah, so we could get that tomorrow.
Like, a special meeting in the school committee versus a joint meeting?
Yeah, and if Ms. Smith is in here, I'm happy to take the minutes, but I just, you know, in a few seconds here, we're about to both adjourn, I'll go first, then you go, and it's like, it's redundant. It's the same information, unless there's a legal obligation to have both, which I'm not obviously aware of.
I've been asking this question for 12 years.
We're about to get an answer, Mr. Fiorello.
Yes, we are. There's no, there's no requirement of policy or fiscal, there's nothing. And, quite honestly, I know there was a concern in case we didn't have a full committee, but quite honestly, we can't get four people, the full committee, then people need to really start looking at their schedules. This is...
That could be a fallback, too, because all we need is two to have a fiscal hearing. So, maybe perhaps, depending on schedules, because we can still have the budget hearing with fiscal, with just, you know, Ms. Smith and I, or Ms. Vogel and I, or Ms. Smith and Ms. Vogel. I don't know if it's like a safety net, but...